Well, it's six o'clock. I don't know who else is gonna show up, but I do really appreciate you guys all coming in here. If you guys would like to spend a couple of minutes talking about some of the things you do, I think it'd be great. I'll put it on YouTube. We'll do some great things. I would like to commend you all, though, to be real honest with you. I spent some time with YouTube earlier, and it's phenomenal. You look at just YouTube, Mennessean Fire Department. There is so much press that you've got, so many Youtubes that show some of the challenging work you guys do, and I really do appreciate it. For whatever it's worth, you know, the city is up the... Last year, I think we donated only five thousand dollars apiece to each of the two fire departments. This year, it was up to fifteen thousand dollars, so there should be something coming there. And we just got today a stunt from the state auditor, another fifteen thousand dollars for each of the two fire departments. So there's some money coming to the fire department, not as much as you guys need, but between that and the money that we're doing with CDBG for the radios and so forth, it is a very important part of what we've got here. I have all the respect in the world for everything you guys do. And I was hoping we'd get some other people here from the city, but if you're here and you would like to just maybe come up and say a couple of words about what it is you do and so forth, it would be greatly appreciated. We're not live on YouTube, but I will put it on YouTube first thing in the morning. There's a couple of things to think about if you're gonna be on YouTube. First off, the camera's right above you, so it doesn't see you guys at all right now. You have to be over here from about where Lois normally sits to where Rose Lee sits on the other side and in this area and here before you're on the video camera at all. I do have some microphones here because audio is horrible if you don't use them. I would suggest that you do use a microphone and... You can start it off there, Delmar. You're the chief. And let's point out a couple of things here. What does it mean to be chief of Mennessean Fire Department? What does that really entail? First off, as I understand it, you're chief when there's a fire.
Right.
Otherwise, you've got two separate chiefs, one for Fire Station One and one for Fire Station Two.
So how it all works is the Bureau of Fire does have a municipal fire chief, myself, Delmore Heppel. Company One has their own company chief, which is Joseph Altmore. Company Two has their own, it's Mike Kastner. I am the chief when the sirens ringing, but behind the scenes, there's just so much more to do. It takes all these officers to get it done. You know, and one thing that I've learned to do nowadays is delegate a lot of stuff to different people. You can't do it all yourself. It's just too much to do. You said earlier, you Youtubed some of Mennessean's fires and some of the challenges we face. We're an older community, a lot of houses that are rundown. You know, you're working on that with the blight. But we do have our share of fires compared to most fire departments in the valley or the county. The biggest challenge being the fire chief is, of course, you come from a town that's distressed in a way, and you don't have the money that others have. You don't have the equipment that others have. But one thing we do have is a lot of qualified firefighters that take this very seriously. And as of lately, I'm sure Mr. Quatro here is gonna touch on it, we've been doing some things that we haven't done in a while. We got some guys that are working on pre-planning. We got some guys that are working with a smoke detector program. That'll all be touched on tonight. But to be honest, you hear me talk enough at council meetings, you hear me talk at other meetings, CDBG meetings. But I do want some of these guys to talk, some of the younger officers, very well-deserved, very highly-trained. And these guys are the future of the Mennessean Fire Department, if not already. And I'd like to have some of them talk, to come up and say a couple of words.
Very good. Who would like to be first? Okay, great.
Noah Quatro. I've been with the number-one department for gun on about ten years now, so I just prepared a couple of things, like Chief said. We'll go over and then whoever else wants to talk, so. Currently, the number-one station has about thirty-three active members on our roster. Everybody fills a little bit of a different role, whether that's, you know, their junior member, a regular member, an officer. So it just incorporates different roles regarding whatever your title is. We do have juniors, you know, they come in at fourteen years old, go through different stages of initial training to prepare themselves for the regular membership. Going up from juniors, we have probationary members that come in, they get voted on by the body. They're under probation for a certain amount of time, and then they have to complete so much training, like essentials of firefighting. They have to complete forty-five hours of in-house training. That's stuff we do in the department, as well as other trainings that they would attend outside of there. And then as a regular member, again, they're gonna continue on with their essentials, finish that up, which is a baseline firefighter training program here in the state of PA. And then they're required to have thirty hours of in-house training as well that we would cover all down here. And then after all the regular memberships, we do have our, you know, our cachet of line officers who are nominated and voted on annually. And then following that, we have our executive and board members that handle a lot of the administrative duties. Real quick, we'll touch on the, like, the operations side of things. The downtown fire station houses two fire engines, one rescue, one squad, and one utility pickup truck at this time. We do have a ladder truck that we recently got that's being refurbished, so hopefully that'll be out on the street soon, serving the community. As most of us know, we're activated by the Westmoreland County 911 Center for an alarm. We respond from home and try to get a piece of apparatus on the road as quick as we can. Briefly to touch on a training, I mentioned some of this already, but we do have training on a weekly basis every Tuesday night. We host in-house training there every Tuesday, lasts about three hours every night, just allows us to stay diligent in practice in our skills. On top of that training, we do annual research on CPR, hazmat training, different things. Many of our downtown firemen also hold pro-board certifications that are recognized on a national level. It's not something we require, but it's something we, you know, push people to achieve. And we try to keep a diversely-trained group of guys around, just so we all have a little bit of knowledge and everything and come together as a team. As far as community interaction, like Chief was mentioning earlier, we've been doing some different things with the residents and visitors in town, such as going to the football games this year, trying to support the football team, being seen out there. The community is a good thing for us. Emergency pre-plans, last week we were at the elementary center, we did a walkthrough and we're gonna finalize a pre-plan for there if something were to occur. And then we were down at Lumisource last week, they did a walkthrough there, too. So a lot of stuff in the works as far as pre-planning the major buildings in town, just something were to arise there. Firework details we do sometimes in the summer, the flag display, and just interacting with the community more out on calls, you know, and let kids see the fire trucks, that kind of stuff always helps us out. As far as fundraising goes, we try to do a few different ones every year. We try to do different bashes, two or three of those a year, different tickets, hoagie sales, pizza sales. We have one coming up on Saturday, actually, just, you know, help keep our funds up. And, you know, something we'd like the public to think of is, you know, you're not just giving us your money, it's an investment in your own safety. So by giving us your monetary donation, it helps us help you the best we can, so. As far as, like, needs or anything, that's a huge list. We're not really gonna get into that tonight, but... Do you guys have any kind of, like, newsletter that goes out for just the residents, like Nottemont Valley Independent, but like a newsletter for the city?
We currently do not.
Okay. Just curious, 'cause there's things we could do, like, you know, one of the big things right now in the fire service is lithium-ion batteries. So, you know, the way we would combat that is a lot different than a normal fire, so. Maybe if there was a newsletter out like that, you know, you guys here, you know, Heppel, and he could get some help from us, could do a newsletter, put a little thing in there for the fire department, maybe run like a voluntary survey to have... If you have this in your house, you know, tell us how many of them you have or what you have, just to get us an idea of what's there. It's a pretty big hazard out in the community right now. And then as far as that lithium-ion stuff goes, we were, a couple of us attended a training out in Conelsville a few weeks ago, an FDNY firefighter was there, he did a training on lithium-ion batteries, and it's pretty good. And we looked into possibly getting him down here at our social hall, so. Between both departments, we might be looking soon to get him to come here and present the class for all the Mennessean firemen. There is a cost associated with it that we're gonna have to work out, and maybe you guys would be willing to, you know, help us out on one end or the other, as far as that goes, but... Another thing that would be nice to put in that newsletter, just advertise to the public, would be, you know, house numbers on your house, so we can see where we're going. That's another big thing. We are working on a number of grants right now, just to try and get ourselves some equipment as far as just what we're doing, so. You know, some grants are in the works for us, and I think that's about all I got, but wish there was more of the community here, so we can touch some other things, but...
Let me ask you a couple of questions. First off, going on YouTube, they'll get on the social media, and this'll hopefully get some circulation going, too. But just as an example, getting the youth involved, I would think, would be a big part of what you're trying to do, get new firefighters for the future.
Yeah, absolutely.
At what age do you need to be before you're really trying to recruit them? Tell me a little bit about how that works. I mean, if I've got a grandson or something, when do I need to start getting him encouraged to do these kinds of things?
We do have a junior program, like I mentioned earlier, that starts at fourteen years old, so we take on members at fourteen, put them through all their initial stages of training at fourteen. They can only go so far, just due to state laws and child labor laws and all that kind of stuff, but... We put them, their essentials of firefighting, they can do that from the beginning up to mod three, which is exterior firefighter. And then once they return eighteen, they can complete that to finish their interior firefighter or mod four, and that would be the complete program. But as a junior, at least down here, we start them at fourteen and just take them, get them as much training as we can. Just everything changes within what age group you're in, so.
Right, right. So when you start them out, how many hours a week or a month or something do they typically invest in this training?
So most of our juniors we have now, I think we have four or five of them, like I said, we have a weekly training, so a lot of them come down every week they're there. So three hours a week at least, that's like the bare minimum that most of them do. But the Essentials Program right now, from start to finish, is a hundred-and-eighty hours. So they would probably cut out about forty or so hours of that, I think. That's the last module that they're not allowed to partake due to their age. So roughly a hundred-and-forty hours of that baseline training they would go through. That's about a three-month ordeal for them, so.
It really sounds like an excellent opportunity for some of our young men to get involved, men and women, I suppose.
Yeah, absolutely. That's a question for them and him.
This is a small town.
Yeah, absolutely.
You have two police units, he got one.
Yeah.
There's several reasons, Ernie, and I know that I've touched on this in the past. To have two companies accomplish is one thing, is with the grants, as he touched on with grants. So now, the way it's set up now, you're qualified for more grants because you have two departments.
Yeah, but how many grants are you gonna get?
Well, you can't think like that, okay? I mean, you, every week, you come here and you sit here with the negative end of everything.
Not negative, I mean, you're never asked.
If we, as a group, went into the community as negative as you, we'd accomplish nothing, absolutely nothing. You cannot be negative. You have to be positive. That's why we're here.
Just asking a question about other possibilities, I'm not negative.
In your eyes, what would it accomplish?
Why, you're gonna consolidate? You're never gonna have double expenses? You're gonna have one?
Why would you not? Why would you not have double expenses?
Well, because usually in a merger, they say he has fifty, if you've got fifty people, you're gonna combine maybe those sixty people, so you're gonna have the best.
But what do you...
Because you cut down.
Run by what you're saving. What are you saving by doing that? There's gonna be less what?
Less volunteers?
Yes.
I mean, think about this, Ernie. But there's volunteers that cost nothing to the normal health.
What about when he needs radios? He needs radios for all of them.
Chief. May I interject for one second?
How about it?
You have two companies in town. You have two stations. Do you know what the fire code is for the city of Mennessean? They actually would like us to have a third station up in the Hill District. Why? Response times.
Well, you could still have one company with these stations.
You could, but it's also, there's other reasons, Ernie. He touched on the grants. You know, if number-one gets a grant, they can get, say they apply for a new truck, they can get a million-dollar grant, okay? If Hilltop applies for another grant, we can get X number of dollars. It's like with a state grant. Every year, both companies apply for a grant. We get, we can get up to fifteen thousand dollars. That's thirty thousand dollars. If there was one company...
And you get fifteen thousand.
You get fifteen thousand would be your max. So there's a monetary effort to it. Also, too, also, too, let me finish, also, too, there's another reason why. There's a cycle in the departments. I've seen this over the decades that I've been in. One time, you'll have number-one going up, number-two's going down, as far as members and quality, and then it turns around and it goes the other way. And it happens, it happens on a cyclic basis. As people age, some companies get better, some companies get worse. And if you put all your eggs in one basket and you drop the basket, you break all your eggs.
The thing is, is if you were to merge, you're, okay, you merged the companies, now we're one company. You still have two buildings. You still have two electric bills. You still have two gas bills. Where are you saving? You still have the same amount of insurance on the guys for workman's comp. Where do you save that money at? Where's it at?
Fundraising.
Radio, right?
It's still the same amount of people. You still need the same amount of radios.
Why would there be, why would you want less people? Why would you want less people?
Well, I said you got fifty, you ain't got fifty.
I wish.
You may need sixty.
Together...
Yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't make sense. So anyway, but that's why we're here, so that the public can, we can answer these questions for them. Two things, I heard Noah talk about, and we need to get with the code enforcement on house, the numbers on houses, because we have an awful lot. I didn't realize until I started looking recently, there is no numbers on a lot of houses. And now that we're going to be tearing down a lot of houses, 204 used to be next to 202, but now it goes to 224, you know what I mean? So we do need to get those numbers taken care of. Fire prevention does, I've been touching base with Mike lately, trying to get the funding for fire prevention. The city used to pay for the whole thing. And ten years ago, when I did it, it was probably fifteen hundred bucks. Now it's over three grand. You know, so everything is, the cost is going up. But what you do accomplish with that is you're getting into the schools, you're making the youth aware of the dangers of fire, the dangers in their own home, things to look at. And we answer their questions when we talk to them. There's some amazing questions coming from them at times, but, you know, nevertheless, it makes them aware of what we do, the fears that they, you know, try to ease some of their fears. But it also does show us that youth to where our future is, like you were hitting on earlier. And that's one of the things we'll be going into the schools in a couple of weeks, and Michaela's spearheading that pretty much and doing a good job with that. The other thing was, we did go to Lumicore the other day, which is something that's new to us. You know, the smelting that's down there is going to be a challenge. Hopefully, it's not. Hopefully, we never have an incident there. We were in the elementary center the other day. Hopefully, the high school this coming week. The school board has been very open to anything I need, just opening the doors and let us have at, you know, the challenges of the buildings and anything we may face. And I think we learned a little bit last week with the elementary center, or this week with the elementary center. We'll learn more with the high schools a little bigger. Radio reception is a problem in the high school, but the newer radios have, from what the tests I did with them, seem to respond better than the old ones in the high school. I think you got an eye-opener with the big fire downtown, you know, just to see how many moving pieces there is in a situation like that, and how overwhelming it'd be for resources and how many people you need.
Let's talk about that fire for just a second, because that is one that a lot of people experienced. It was right downtown, and you can still see the remains of that. When that fire happened, there was a lot of unknowns. You didn't know if there was anybody in that apartment, for one thing. That was a major concern, and it took some time for you to ascertain that. Secondly, you had a fantastic response. Not only did you have both our fire stations there, but you had the local communities through your cooperative agreements that you have, such that Charlotte was here and so forth. And that's something you really need to talk a little bit about, some of the cooperative agreements you have. But even more so than that, it really was an eye-opener for everybody in that there was explosions going on. And nobody knew what these were. Were they paint cans exploding? Were they lithium batteries? I still don't know to this day that we really know. But when you have these explosions going on, that has gotta be just a phenomenally difficult thing to address as a fireman. I, what was running through your head when all this was going on?
Well, I think, I've seen on the video Zach was there first, but I came after Zach. But Zach was getting dressed, and the explosion started in the rear of the cell phone building. And to be in charge and to look at that, that is the great unknown. What is it? What's happening? You know, it blew the back of the building off, so what is it? You know, so you gotta weigh that against, you know, you risk a little to, you know, save a lot, or you, you know, you just gotta put that in your head, that what are we gonna do here today? We can't lose a life over two empty buildings. So once I established the fact that the clothing store was empty, and no matter what I thought about the cell phone store, it was already, there was nothing left that wasn't had fire in it, so. You know, like, when you compare that to the State Road fire that we had, where these guys rescued the lady from the house there, you had that little hope. You had that little piece of house that was not involved yet. So, you know, I know there's a couple of guys out here that are gonna tell you, if there's that little piece, we wanna go after it. You know, and that night on State Road, you know, it worked out. But I think if you tried to make any kind of entry in the cell phone building, it would have been, it would have ended differently.
That was one that went all day long. It was all day, all-day affair. And I'm not saying that's unusual for what you have.
It may probably went too long, but that was on an air of caution, you know, on my part, I think, that it, nobody got hurt, and that was a great day for us. You know, 'cause I don't wanna see anybody get hurt, and I wanna send everybody home, so you have to weigh that out. And there's five million things going on in your head as to how to do that. The one thing that did work out that day is communication. You've seen it, okay? You have twenty units there, you probably had, what, seventy-five, hundred firemen?
At least.
They all have to be able to talk to each other, and that's why I've been stressing the radios and making sure we get to the bottom of that and get it finished out, that we get everything completed with radios. Communication is the key. You don't have communication, it's mayhem, you know? So I was glad, I was glad in a way, 'cause I looked at you a few times that day, as to what your expression would be over the overall picture of what, you know, I wish the whole council could have been there to see it, to see exactly what these guys do, what they put on the line for this community. You know, you hear it all the time. It's a cliche, I guess, firemen put their lives on the line. There's something wrong with them. They're running in, we're running out. You know, but to see it in action, to actually witness it, it's pretty impressive. You know, and I know a lot of people were standing with their phones out in awe as to the size and scope of the whole thing, but I think it went pretty well.
Absolutely. One of the things that affected me, I was trying to stay out of everybody's way. For the most part, I think I did pretty good in not getting in anybody's way. But I was still close enough to get smoked. And I had a cough as a result of that fire.
For two weeks, right?
At least two weeks. It seemed like a lifetime. It just couldn't get, couldn't shake it, and I'm convinced it came from that fire.
Absolutely.
And to expect you guys to go into these fires all the time, I understand why you're carrying the respirators. I understand why you're doing this. That's just nasty stuff. You just don't know what's going on.
That's why the year before, or two years before, when I stood in front of the council at the time and said that we need air packs. They're outdated. They're not, you know, they can't be tested anymore. And when you think about that as a group, as you guys, and you say, holy, that's two hundred grand or whatever it is, you know? And then when council came back and said, we're gonna do this, you know, it was the right thing to do. And it keeps all these guys safe. And we're gonna keep coming, 'cause we have to. We have to keep coming. We have to ask the public to, you know, to be on board with us, to give these guys what they need, you know? And we'll be back, you know, after the radios are solved, we'll be back for what we need.
I'm sure.
And hopefully, you know, and me and Mike were talking the other day, one thing we haven't had for a while is the RL identification for the Bureau of Fire. Like, when Timmy Billick was in years ago, he had his own identification, his own SAMs number. He can go for grants on his own. I seen in the FEMA grant the other day that the city of Alacquippa, the city administrator got two-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars, I think it was, for the Bureau of Fire. So that's why do you, why do you not merge? Why do you keep separate identities, so that now you can possibly go for three sets of grants? You know, and if the city can, you know, be in a condition it's in, if Alacquippa can get, their city administrator can get two-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand, I don't see why we shouldn't be able to get something, you know? Because in all honesty, the newest truck in the city of Mennessean right now is a 2008, correct? And that sounds new, but that's not. That's fifteen years old. You know, engine one, it's a pretty vehicle, it's, you know, but it's fifteen years old. So eventually, we're gonna have to think about vehicles. We can't keep just repairing things and putting them on the road, 'cause there's gonna be that day when you really need it and it doesn't work.
Absolutely.
And so I think I've rambled enough. Anybody else? No? Sure? Aaron?
This is the issue we got here. They're broke, okay? And they cannot fulfill everybody's request. So that's why I was coming from a merger point of view, because... And I can't tell you how that will work, because we have to sit down and have intelligent people that know how to merge, to tell you how you're gonna benefit. But the big thing is, they don't have no money coming in. They're relying on grants, just like you people. And they're not going out of their way to bring industry in, so they could hire two-hundred, five-hundred, a thousand people, and then they could pay taxes and buy real estate, and they'll get... Nobody's doing that. They're all playing this cat and mouse game. Well, I'm gonna get this from the county, and we'll get this from the state, I'm gonna get this from the federal. Well, guess what? That's not an unlimited spring. They all got their problems. And all I know is that if we do not bring in any industry, okay, the comprehensive plan he keeps talking about, what was that all about? I went to those meetings. Oh, we're gonna put a boutique here, we're gonna put a Chinese cleaners here, we're gonna put... That's not industry. All that stuff...
Explain to me what you want for industry. Tell me what kind of industry...
Industries, okay. The Amazon, Amazon was passed up by, where is that? I don't know if I can see clear.
Back up on the mic for a little bit. You're getting too much rain. You're too close.
Okay. Near Monroeville, what's that? Churchill. Churchill turned them down. How come nobody went after Amazon?
We did.
For distribution.
We did, but first off, we're too far from their population center that they're trying to serve, for one, for two.
Well, they're looking at New Stanton.
Yeah.
Well...
New Stanton's got right there on the freeway. We're not.
They always got like...
They're also closer to Greensburg.
They also got subdivisions, okay?
Yeah, you're right.
Okay, but nobody's going after them.
The other thing, too, is Amazon is a great employer, but they're also highly automated, that it's a very automated processing plant they have. The biggest thing you're gonna get out of Amazon is the truck drivers and so forth.
All I know is that nobody is marketing Mennessean. That's all I know.
We are...
You're just going after government funds, but you're not going after private industry.
We are trying hard.
Like who? Who did you reach out to?
We've been reaching out to number, and I'm not gonna go into that right now.
Yeah, well, you never do, because I keep asking that at every meeting. You guys said you're working on it. You're working on it. And I wanna know this...
Let's get back to what we're talking about here at this evening, which is the fire department.
What were you playing, Santa Claus? They were telling you what they need, and you're gonna say, okay, okay.
No, no, I think that this is an opportunity for the population of Mennessean to understand what the need of the fire department is.
I'm talking about them. You guys got no capacity to help any of these people here.
I've heard this all before.
Me, too.
Yeah, well, because you guys sing the same vibe in here.
You know, Ernie, do me a favor. I'm getting off council. Why don't you run for council? Get elected.
I ran last time, but his buddy, Lou Marvakis, took off sixteen of my signatures, and I went under a hundred.
And did good signatures. You have to...
Well, next time, I gotta get more.
You have to do your dirty diligence.
And you know what they said up there? Is he running against you? I said, no. Ron Moser, Ron Moser was out of, you know, out of the thing. He had Lou doing his dirty work. And I don't wanna get into this, but the thing is, the whole thing is wacky here, okay? We don't have responsible people, and we don't have intelligent people.
Anytime you wanna come help out and take, you know, help us in some ways.
Do that by me. I told Mike, you could put your ads in my favor for free, and yet you go to the Monroeville Independent and pay four-hundred-and-fifty dollars. Now, that's what I tried to, and I also told... And I also told seventy, "Stop, you want me to pray?" I still didn't get shit. So, don't tell me I, I don't wanna help.
Watch your language.
Okay, and I, you guys are in a clique. And because I'm not in that clique, I'm outside. So, that's part of the problem in Menneson. You gotta be in a clique. If you're not in a clique, sayonara.
You gotta be somebody that wants to work with others.
I am. I got people-
That's why you're yelling at me.
I'm yelling at you because you keep saying the same thing. You know, Ron, I know this as a fact. You're not gonna get re-elected again. I know that a thousand percent, because I talk to the people out there. You fumbled the ball.
Sorry about that.
May I?
You may.
This is part of our issue. This is part of our problem. I saw that with Matt Scherrall. When I came into office, I had been talking to them, and I had made, uh, the decision that I was gonna support a lot of what they were doing. So, that automatically made me an enemy to... Sorry, Ron. His faction. It is true. It made me his enemy. Ron, you have any trouble with working with me?
A bit.
You know why? 'Cause I'm not here for me. I'm not here for him. I'm here for you guys. I do what I think is best. Do I make mistakes? Yeah. More, more than I'd like to admit to. I did some stupid things on council. And I kick myself in the ass every time I think about it. But, when they took office, I made a decision that I was gonna work for the betterment of Menneson. Too long, we've had this. People wanna scream at each other. They don't wanna work. If something Lou Mavreckis had done, the other side wanted to get rid of. If Mary Jo did, wanted to do something, we had to get, the other side wanted to get rid of it. Perfect example, the amphitheater. And what did it accomplish? It made us into laughingstocks. We became a joke. Fortunately, right now, we're not so bad. You know why? We don't fight like we used to. Why? There's no point to it. I could tell him what he did wrong. He can tell me what I did wrong. And what does it accomplish? Makes us look like idiots. Screaming at us. The reason he hears the same thing, he tells him the same thing all the time? Because the facts haven't changed. What's in Menneson that people wanna come here for? There's a lot of good things. Look at our parks. Look at our library. Don't look at our downtown so much. I don't agree with everything he's doing as far as tearing the buildings down, but you know what? We're going to have empty lots that someone can come in and develop. Why? Did he do it all? No. Matt Scherrall helped. He got things started. The other mayor's got things started. But because it's two factions, and it's about a fifty-fifty split, we can't get along. And until we start getting along and quit screaming at each other at meetings, it's gonna continue. You wanna look like idiots? Just keep doing what we used to do. Do this. We look bad. Who wants to come here? How many of you guys show up for meetings? Why? Why do you wanna come here? To listen to somebody carry on? It's always the same thing. And they have legitimate concerns. I have no problem with them speaking out. But why can't we be civil? You tell me why we can't. But as long as we continue to act like this, it's not gonna happen.
He ain't doing nothing, that's why. Every month I come, okay, twice a month, and he has to move one inch from his position.
He doesn't tell you everything he's doing.
He ain't doing too much, because I have people that tell me what he does and what he doesn't do.
Well, I guess they know everything, Ernie.
They don't know everything, but they know something.
Well, I'll tell you what. There's a lot of people out there. I wish that they would work together.
I do, too.
Because we do have, we have some very intelligent people in town. We have some extremely bright people.
He already puts anything on the website, Menneson website. He ain't even improving people. How many people knew that there was a meeting today?
Go and tell you.
I just found out about twenty-five minutes before I came.
How'd you find out?
Somebody told me when I was at the supermarket. And I said, "Okay, I'm gonna take the stuff home. I'll come right back." He ain't getting his message out.
Well... Have you ever gone online and seen how many people watched the council meetings?
Before, when, uh, Delfonso Cino was recording it, and it was on YouTube, it was getting anywhere from three hundred, forty, up to seven hundred when Matt Scherrall got started.
Yeah. But you see how many people? You see how many people watching now?
When the Mont Valley people stopped recording it, now it's like, I don't know, seventy-five, a hundred and twenty? And, and it doesn't go on the YouTube or on Facebook.
It's on both.
There, there's some people, when the actual meeting's going on, there's ten or twelve people watching. And then there's the people that are here. This is a big crowd.
Well, partly because they, they were thinking for somebody. You know, they have a purpose. But the common citizens, where are they? Um, Justin here, he's here. Who else is here?
I know who comes in. Trust me. I'm aware.
Well, Ken's gonna be a captain.
Yeah, trust me, I'm aware. I'm, I know who shows up.
Is he reaching out to the public? I don't see him doing anything.
I wasn't planning, but, uh, first of all, Dawn, I tip my hat to you, because everything you've said is absolutely true. Uh, the, we have a fantastic town. I mean, I'm not from here originally. I'm not a born and raised, as, that's the other thing that people look for, is are, are they born and raised here? But I'm not born and raised here. Uh, but it's a fantastic town. It really is. We've got seven restaurants. We've got ballfields that have lights in them. Uh, we have a beautiful park. Uh, we have, we have the library. Uh, we, we have fantastic volunteers. Look at the young people that are, that are volunteering, not to put anything against the older members there, but the police and fire, I mean, you couldn't pay me to do that kind of a job. Uh, I think it's just terrifying. I think your families must shake when they hear the whistles go off or the emails, whatever, however you're, you're reached. And, uh, and the fact that we have volunteers for a fire is just absolutely incredible. To have this number is incredible, because we're all looking for volunteers. You know, my heart is with the library at all times. And we're always looking for volunteers. We're always looking for people who will commit. And here's, here's a whole group of people that will do it. I've had a little contact with, with our police department over time, and I've been so impressed by them. And, and for things that were, that you wouldn't even think about, that your police would be involved in. And to show the compassion and understanding and, uh, the knowledge that they share in, in situations that you just didn't even think about contacting them in the first place. So, I think we have a terrific town. I really do. It's got a lot of problems, a lot. And the biggest thing is this fight that goes on. You know, a long time ago, somebody said to me, "You keep your friends close and your enemies closer." We, we haven't figured that out yet. And, and our whole world's like that. You know, either you're a Democrat or you're Republican. And, I mean, I had a father who, one day, when I told him, "I'm a Democrat." And he's a Democrat, and I was gonna vote for a Republican, and I was talking about how good this person was. My father about heart-attacked out on me. And, and you're voting for, "You can't, you're a Democrat." Well, that has nothing to do with anything. We choose the organizations we work with and, and whether that voting group says it. None of them say exactly. None of them have, have, have the knowledge to fix these problems. These problems are year-long problems that are so complex and take so much doing, uh, to get done. And we're not doing it. We're not working together. We're not coming, we don't come, we used to say in the, I used to say in the office, "Don't bring me your problems unless you can bring me a solution." Because the problem is not hard to identify. It's the solution. And a working solution is hard. That's what's really hard to do. And to stick to those solutions, to make them happen, 'cause they don't happen overnight. You don't say, "Oh, here's the problem. Here's the solution." So, but we don't see that. I mean, we just go on and on. And we all want money. And I will come and say, one of the things in hearing, when you're talking about fire, is, that comes to my mind, because as I say, library is near and dear to me. I think it's the physical fitness area for the brain. And, um, I would be interested to know how many city buildings pay for their own maintenance, pay all their utilities, pay all their insurance. I'd be very interested to know how many there are besides the library.
Not many.
Are there others that pay to have their toilet seat?
Well, we also have the Civic Center, which contributes to theirs as well.
The Civic Center pays for their-
They don't pay all of it, but they contribute to it.
Yeah. Well, you know, I think when you're looking at your budgets, and I know everybody here wants a little cut of the money, but we certainly can use some help. I mean, the, it's astronomical what it takes. I mean, just to hire, uh, we have all, we're very fortunate to have, we have one full-time librarian and two, um, part-times. And both of those, I mean, all three of those are master-level librarians. And that's a lot of education that they have to go through and continuing education. And, um, those salaries, we can't even compete to bring people to this town. And when people come in and see, I've had relatives come and visit, and I take them to the Historical Society and the library, and they're like, "Wow. Wow, your library is, it's amazing." You know? And, and I, then we say, "Well, no, we can't do that. We don't have the money to do that." "No, we can't do that. We don't have the money to do that." We have to have insurance. We can't have our, our books catch on fire and, and not have any insurance. So, we have to pay these things. But we have simple things like lights that don't go on and toilet seats that need to be changed and leaky faucets and things that I think there must be people... You know, if I wasn't the age I am, you know, the eighties are not the time for you to go out and start with your wrenches again. But, uh, you know, to, to fix some of those little things, I, I think, is very important. Uh, maybe you guys can fix stuff at the firehouses, I don't know. But I hope that in the future, and if you're not on that whoever succeeds you, that you will encourage them to look at these, these little things, because what I'm afraid of, especially with the library, is the deterioration.
Yes.
Uh, the roof, the, you know, the whole, the doors, the, I mean, just things. When I go into Friends of the Library meeting, I kinda look around and I, you know, the water spots and, you know, it's, uh, uh, what do we have? Are we gonna let it collapse and say, "Oh, well, we're not gonna have a library"?
One of the things you also need to keep in mind, too, is although the library is required to pay some, pay for a lot of their stuff, they are taxed, they, they receive tax money-
Right.
-just as everybody else does.
Right.
The fire department does not. The police department does not. They do not get any of that money. That comes out of the general fund that we get. And the only reason why the fire department is successful, because people volunteer. That is the really, the only reason why we have a, uh, thing. We're not paying them gazillion dollars. How, how many here are getting paid enough money that they can feed their family and raise a family on what they're earning at the fire department?
Yeah, zero.
Zero.
But that's why we have a Friends of the Library.
That's right. And that's the reason why they go out for grants, and that's the reason why-
That's why volunteers and the friends go out and raise money for the library to pay their bills.
And it's really a necessary thing to do. The city is distressed. It has been distressed for many years.
Yeah.
It, uh, and I've said this many times. You got the declining population, the increasing expenses that are going up. When they cross, you're done. Well, they've crossed. They truly have. That, uh, last year, we, we survived, because we got the cell, the money from the East Gate Building. We got the Fourth Street money from, from, uh, from the gas company that did the work out there. We got paid back some money from the sewer project that we had invested, that prior administrators had invested. We did all right last year. For the first time in fifteen years, we came out above water. This year, we're struggling to make it to the end of the year. We'll make it, but it's not gonna be easy. It's not gonna be by spending any money. It's just tight. It's that tight. Uh, it'll require using funds such as the art funds or, or some other fund that is non-sustainable. We'll never see art funds again.
Right.
We'll never see these monies again. This building across the way here, we need to find a good customer for it and sell it to them. We need to look for new ways to, to do the things that we've done. We're quite lucky to have the county come in, and I don't want to get, go down this road, but we're quite lucky to have the county come in and do the demolitions that they're doing. Uh, that was, that was something that they've, they've taken upon themselves. It gives us a chance to hit the reset button, It gives us a chance to hit the reset button, that we can get rid of the problem sites that we have in this town, and have the opportunity to do what Ernie wants, to bring in other people to come in and do something. The way we do that is we promote the city in everything that we do. We've got the best restaurants. People, you go into By George on a Friday night, you look around, I won't recognize anybody from Menneson, because they're all coming from the south side of Pittsburgh, or even Ohio, because it just attracts that-
Right, they hear about the Luchesi's.
And they are not alone. We have Luchesi's, we have Steel Plate, we have all these restaurants.
Dominican's.
Oh, yeah, the rest just goes on. We've got some excellent restaurants, and they do extremely well. They dry in. We need more, there's no doubt. But if we were to, as an example, US Steel up in Claritin, they are, they're up for sale, apparently. There's lots of people making offers on it in any event.
Yeah.
Why would they be wanting to sell it? Because, first off, they've been fined out, almost out of existence by Allegheny County. So what they have is a very old plant that's got lots of issues up there. If they can sell that, maybe they can take that money and build a new plant, this modern, that has all the modern things going on with it, some other place that doesn't have their regulation problems. I'm just speculating here, but think about that for a second. Now you have a modern plant, a modern, new modern steel plant. How do they operate that steel plant? They're gonna have a guy sitting in the control room, this guy, displays here, buttons over here, he wants to do a mixture, he pushes a button here, he pushes a button over there, and he has automation doing the work. To expect an industry like was in Menneson forty, fifty, sixty years ago, that had a large number, ten thousand-
Right.
-unemployed, not unemployed, unskilled labors that were being paid good money. They could come down and they could work, it was basically run by backbone. That's what ran the steel plant. That's not the way it works anymore. That, that's the reason why China took so much of our steel away from us, is they have the ability-
Well, we knew a lot of this stuff beforehand, though. We haven't gone with the flow, but-
You're exactly right.
You know, the other thing that, when I, I've come to a few of the town meetings, I don't know why everyone isn't, like all of council, doesn't attend the town meetings.
Not allowed to.
And I think, pardon me?
Not allowed to.
Oh, you're not allowed to?
No, because it'd become a quorum, and it'd be a council meeting again.
They can't just say they're attending.
Sunshine Act, not allowed to.
All you can have is two.
Two.
If there was a third person show up, somebody'd have to get up and leave.
There's four.
Then you're in violation of Sunshine Act, because you didn't publish an agenda, blah, blah, blah. Somebody sues you, you lose twenty-five thousand dollars.
Because I think one of the things that, when they see the whole council, I think they feel more of a trust. And I think that's the other thing lacking. There isn't the trust of the officials in town because of this clashing that has gone on for centuries.
Yeah, and we try to be as transparent as we possibly can. We really try to be very open. We publish all of the bills, we publish all the discussion.
Well, I don't wanna tie them up, because I know everybody, I just, as I said, I wasn't planning.
Well, thank you, I appreciate it.
But I just wanted to make a couple comments.
I got a question for Steve. Has that stuff been taken care of down at your station? Mike, what's the deal?
Well, I know he's coming down to do the water issues. I thought he was in the process of doing that, he was supposed to be here when I'm there.
He's supposed to be here when?
And he was not there.
Mike, it's been going on since John Harrow was here with Bob, these toilets. I didn't know.
How long's John been here?
Two years.
Couple years, at least, yeah.
One of the things that we talked about, Dawn, I just wanna bring up-
Can you get in front of Mike?
The deals with these types of issues. Hef and I talked about reinstituting monthly chiefs and essential personnel who you guys designate to bring to the table, and have these monthly meetings so we can go over all these types of issues and keep after them on a better basis. And I think that's gonna work better and more efficiently for us, but we've gotta find these vendors who can help us and finish these jobs. You're right.
Do we wanna think about looking at another plumber to come in and do this? I mean, Mr. Gaudle is great, but if he doesn't have time, if he's not available-
The problem has been done cost, and that's what we've tried, he's really reasonable, so we've been trying to do that, and I've been trying to be patient. I'm not knocking him in public, but he did say it was his schedule that was sort of inhibiting him getting down there and that sort of thing. We've gotta get it done, though.
How many lights we got out down there, light bulbs and stuff?
He's, now, that's an electrician's job, and the gentleman who fixed the generator has a bid on both that and some of the heating type units that are in the top of the-
So that bid's out?
He has-
Are we gonna have it for next week?
Well, he's allowed in a personal service contract type format to give us numbers. We could approve that then, at the meeting to get that-
This, how long's this been going on?
Mostly overhead lights have done the parking lots, yeah. Yeah, just fluorescent light bulbs, just a matter of getting the bucket truck in there and getting up and changing all the lights.
Well, a bucket truck, we have one that works. Well, we could always borrow a bit.
I know a guy.
You know a guy?
Yeah, and we've been talking about that.
You could always borrow one?
Yes.
But, so that's the easy fix, a couple boxes from Van Decks, they got their lights up.
Well, can we look into getting at least the lights changed while we're waiting for the plumbing work to be done?
Are the guys on the crew capable of doing it? That was one of the questions that they brought up, saying-
Oh, yeah, yeah, they're just, it's just changing, what, four foot or six foot?
Well, then, then we can do that part of it, then, yeah.
Steve and Coleman, Steve and Jidge, they can get it.
All right, well, I'll talk tomorrow.
Before Steve leaves.
Before Steve leaves.
Okay.
You could run the bucket truck.
No, I don't even do that. They're capable.
They're capable.
They ran ours. That's one thing they're good at, they can do it.
If we have can finalize Godla tomorrow, let's do that. If not, then we have to look at some other alternative to finish.
I'm not calling on anyone.
Yeah, I don't wanna complain about it, but these guys have been waiting a long time.
I understand, I understand. But, and also, but in consideration of cost, we've been trying to keep things really tight.
We're gonna afford a box of bulbs.
You think?
I hope.
Maybe. Before the end of the year, you better get it done.
You better get it done.
Better get it done.
And he also had, the electrician, an application for the outside lights that would give you both the view of the fire station and that sort of thing, but also come down on the bays when you're backing and putting the trucks in to help you there. And we have numbers on that, we should just get, I think we should move forward on that part, too, to get that done. That's both safety and aesthetics, but it's more safety on that part. All right, well, I pledge to work with Hef tomorrow on Godla, get that, and if we have to do our thing with our guys for the bulbs, we'll shift on that.
I mean, that's an easy fix.
Okay.
Let's get the lights done.
And those heating units, though, at the top that you guys mentioned, that's, I think, a little out of the city crews, and he has a bid on that, too, with his garage unit. And are all doors working there? Are you guys satisfied with the way the doors are working now with the generator fixed?
They worked during the generator test, but, no. All of them did.
The doors didn't go up when the generator was-
It used to. It was built, everything worked, the radio room, the doors.
So the doors aren't going up?
I thought you, yeah, Chief said they tested them and they went up, with one of your guys there.
What you got, yeah.
When was that?
Last week.
Last week.
Okay, well, I'll check tomorrow morning on that, then.
Down there, that's all he was using, he was using, the two did the test, and the doors do go up. The only thing that doesn't work in the building is the three place during-
Right. I'll check in the morning, then.
I'm almost certain that they do up.
But, yeah, he did say that, yep.
Dave, I asked Dave and Paul, they both said, all the doors go up with the generator and they're not working.
Okay. So that would be the list of all the issues, but, yeah, the fluorescents, we can get those done quicker, absolutely, yep.
I mean, that's pretty a lot cheaper if our guys did it.
I believe, yeah.
I don't know.
Yeah, I believe so, yeah, okay. Okay.
Yeah, the other issue with the doors, though, is how do they open up the openers? If the remotes have worked, the openers, they don't work.
What do you mean, the remotes?
In trucks, they close the doors and that opens, they don't work.
Really?
So if you pull out, going to a structure fire, you got two choices, either wait for somebody to go close the doors, or you make the stage shut a lot of the time.